This is the work session of the City Council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona. It'll be held March 12th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. First order of business is roll call, please.
Councilmember Holt House.
Here.
Councilmember Holt.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Narin.
Here.
Council Vice Mayor Henry.
Here.
Mayor Alinsky.
Here, thank you.
And Councilmember Howard is absent.
Okay, great, thanks. I'd like to welcome our newest council member, Councilmember Jackie Narin, welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here.
Glad to be here.
Great, good. So first, we have three items tonight for discussion, consideration, and possible direction to staff. First up is the draft strategic plan for the city. I believe we have, well, we'll let you kick it off.
I'll go ahead and kick it off. Ryan is going to present. So my first week on the job, we had two days of strategic planning and hearing from the community. At the end of that process, you guys came up with five main topics that council did to create a strategic plan. You gave us an outline and lots of ideas. So since then, we, staff has, I reassigned it. I asked Ryan to be our lead on the project. He then, the executive team, the leadership team decided, took a different topic. The only requirement was they couldn't take their topic. Robert was not in charge of infrastructure and Tom was not in charge of water resources. We really wanted some new ideas that were uninhibited by rules and tradition, just kind of some brainstorming. They then put a group of people together from frontline employees. So we got our frontline employees together, police department, fire department, utilities, again throughout the city from different departments. They got together and worked on brainstorming and came up with a bunch of ideas. Then the leaders got together and debated them some more, and then Ryan and I debated them some more, and we came back to the leadership team at least one other time, and this is the results. Ryan's going to review them with you. We're open to feedback. It is draft. Did we hit the mark? Did we miss the mark? Is there something we left off you want to add? And then depending on the outcome of your input, we'll either come back, is my guess is what we'll do, or we could be good from this point forward. But this is your strategic plan, your guide to staff, and so really, we're hoping to get feedback from the council tonight.
Okay.
With nothing else, Ryan.
Okay. So this is our first draft of the strategic plan, and you'll notice 2019, 2020, that's something that obviously can be adjusted, but that's kind of the basic framework that we were working with when we created these ideas and had these discussions. So the five strategic priorities that the council came up with are listed there. Facilitate economic growth, number one. Number two, maximize efficient water use and reuse. I want to note that this was slightly adjusted. We had protect water resources, and when we used the word protect, we ran into some legal ramifications. So hopefully, we give the same meaning, just worded a little differently. Promote quality of life, develop and improve infrastructure, and refine the budget process. And again, that one went through several changes on our way. Improve, strengthen, and we've landed on refine, but that can also be adjusted as well. So facilitate economic growth. This team was led by Hezekiah Allen. First and foremost, solidify the identity of the brand as the heart of Arizona wine country. That is something that we wanted to be very specific about, and we talk about the heart of Arizona wine country and our brand. Create and implement citywide logo standard. What we mean by this is potentially t-shirts, business cards, merchandise, pins, logos in the conference rooms, so we're all on the same page and everybody knows we are the heart of Arizona wine country. We also included update the monument signs, because as you drive into Cottonwood, you might want to know that we're the heart of Arizona wine country, and currently, some of those monument signs are hard to find. Develop and implement internal citywide brand strategy that reinforces the city's brand The city's brand philosophy is something that as staff, and Mr. Corbin's really done a good job of trying to lead us in that direction of what that is and what that means. And we talked about how the library could potentially, you know, embrace that strategy. We don't have to be, we're not selling wine at the library, right? But can we do programs that coordinate with the heart of Arizona wine country? Can we do poetry? Can our streets and our sidewalks look like we are the heart of Arizona wine country? And that also means that all of the decisions that we make, we should try to connect to the brand philosophy and the mission statement. Number two there is promote and invest in our unique quality of life. We do have a unique place to live, and we need to let people know about it. Develop, maintain our outdoor recreation in a manner that promotes economic growth. That means promote our parks, our open space, our river access, our bikeways, and our trails. All of that unique quality of life that we have to offer. Number three, improve infrastructure. This was interesting that this group talked about prioritize investments in Cottonwood's arterial roads to reinforce the brand philosophy. And I think that the discussion revolved around when you drive into Cottonwood, do you feel like you're driving into the heart of Arizona wine country? And that's where, you know, obviously, you want to invest in all of our streets and roads, but can we make our streets, our arterial roads feel like it's the heart of Arizona wine country? That includes sidewalks, bike lanes, wayfinding signage, and streetscapes. This was an important one. Number four, create and maintain a business-friendly and customer-focused community. Promote and develop policies and procedures that support workforce housing. That was a big part of the discussion at the retreat, and what can the city do to help that? Promote and expand business infill and retention opportunities. Explore opportunities for new industry related to the city's airport. Partner with local education agencies to promote workforce development. I know this was also another hot topic, and something that people were talking about is how can the city support the education system in the area? And evaluate and improve current customer service practices from the customer's perspective. I think that's the key there, that we as city employees take a look at how the customer views all of our services, not just community development, but I would include library and other public facing services in there as well. Next priority is maximize efficient water use and reuse. This priority was led by Kirsten Lennon. We want to become the leader, if we're not already, become the leader in water reuse and education. Develop a comprehensive water reuse program and plan for use to further reuse of reclaimed water. Plan land use, I'm sorry. So when we're doing the planning process, we look at where can we reuse some of this water that we're going to be, that we have. Engage the community. This was a big one for all five. Really, everybody wanted to see this. This is something that with the water specifically, create an intelligent water use citizen engagement council. Have folks and have citizens participate in how we can better do that. Continue and expand water educational programs for the Verde Valley. We know that we're doing that. We do have some unique programs around here, but can we cross over? Can, I'll use the library as an example. Can the library be doing a little bit more with youth and education for water use and reuse? And of course, utilize water conservation grants for education. So, you know, we're sitting up here, we're not just asking for money. We can also find grants to help support some of these things. Number three, emphasize the Verde River when promoting Cottonwood. This is something that came up as far as the river and where is it, and can we find it, and how can we support that? There was somebody specifically who's recently moved here, and they indicated that it was hard, it was hard to find. So we have this unique resource, we need to help people get there. And then partner with water conservation organizations for events and programs. Ideas revolve around maybe the disc golf tournament that we had annually, could that support a water conservation organization, something of that nature? And then four, invest in water infrastructure. Continue to support water settlement negotiations. We know Tom's working hard with that. Develop a plan to expand reclaimed and potable water infrastructure throughout Cottonwood. And evaluate and invest in the city's storm water management program. Promote quality of life. This was led by John Carter, IT Director. This was, each one of these groups had a very interesting way of going about this. We didn't tell them, this is how you need to do it. So you could tell this was an IT-led group, in a good way. Evaluate the use of our community parks. Talk about hosting more events or community events at our parks, and use them in that way. Explore and evaluate opportunities for creating pocket parks and gathering spaces on city-owned property. So do we have, do we have land that we already own that we could use for gathering spaces? And when we talk about reusing some of our water, is that something that we can do too when we plan for that? Explore alternative funding sources for that. Somebody came up with the idea of crowdfunding, something that looks like, is there a cause? Is there a purpose for a pocket park? And can we get the community involved and help and support that? Again, increase community involvement. Encourage and support citizen-driven community events. And I think what this group was talking about when they say citizen-driven is something that the citizens want. We're going to go ask them what they're looking for and try to do that. Develop an IM Cottonwood campaign, or the I Heart Cottonwood campaign, something of that nature. And I think we're in the works on something like that. And they talked about implementing and adopt a street sidewalk and trail cleanup program, getting our community involved that way. Number three is strengthen community awareness and education. The discussion around here was not just, let's not just let people know what it is that we're doing. The education piece is why sometimes we're doing the things that we're doing. So there's not just a hurrah, we finished something, here's kind of the process, and here's how we went about it, and why we went about it. So we want to develop promotional plans for the Arts Entertainment District, Trails Master Plan, Parks Master Plan, Riverfront Wastewater Plant, and the Cottonwood Community Develop and improve infrastructure. Number one, continue to support street and sidewalk improvements. Analyze and update the street and bridge inventory. Make sure we're up to date with all of that and we're on target with all of that. Update the street and sidewalk replacement schedule. Let's have a plan for it. Let's make sure we're on target. And then complete Mingus Avenue and implement the Main Street Road Diet. Those are all things that we think we can do in the next couple of years here. Number two, evaluate the viability of a new city hall. This had several rounds of discussion, but we want to include in the capital improvement plan and budget for future council discussion. So make sure it's included in the plan for council to decide. And number three, prepare for the future. Develop a plan for long-term improvements of Mingus wastewater treatment plant and collection system. Plan for all of that that's upcoming. Continue to develop a regional transit system to include bikes, trails, and sidewalks. That's something that is in the works currently. Evaluate and implement maintenance plans for city assets and invest in replacements. This includes the streets, buildings, and vehicles. I think that where this comes from is as we look forward, we can't forget about what we already have. We also need to be maintaining the buildings, the vehicles, everything that we have. And explore solutions to current and future traffic patterns. To make sure that if we're growing, we're going to grow with it. Okay. I'm sorry. Develop and improve infrastructure. That was Rudy Rodriguez who led that, facilitated that group.
I'm sorry, who facilitated that?
Rudy.
Rudy Rodriguez.
He didn't have anything else going on, I guess. Refine the budget process. This was Morgan Scott's group. The big one that they talked about was about communication and getting everybody on the same page.
Ryan.
Oh, sorry. Refine the budget process. Enhance communication between the city council, city staff, and citizens. Ensure departmental goals, objectives, and performance measures support the city's brand philosophy and mission statement. So when we come up and we give you all of our achievements and goals and future, where does that tie in to our brand, our brand philosophy, and our mission statement? Exactly. Align department budgets to support the city's brand philosophy and mission statement. B is expand citizen input methods. Make sure that, you know, we've talked about more functions where we invite the public, but a lot of the discussion also revolved around how can we meet the public where they're at? Not just expect the public to come to us. And then promote collaborative interaction among the council, staff, and citizens. So maybe it's at events that we have, we have things where we have open dialogue and we're seen a little bit more, not just at our place of work. And then two, promote cost-saving initiatives. This seemed like a good one and an easy one for us to do was develop an employee incentive program for creation of cost-saving measures. Most of these ideas came from the ground up. I think a lot of the cost-saving measures, we can look at the same thing. So we're going to listen. We've already started that process of listening to line-level employees and making sure that they have that input and they can help solve some of those issues. Expand the cooperative purchasing efforts. We have contracts that are available. I know the library, we hopped on one immediately that saved us just 6% right off the top of every book purchase. Just easy, makes sense. Educate our staff about what that looks like. And then review current organizational structure and staffing models. Make sure everybody is where we need to be.
Ryan, who did this? Who was the lead on this? I don't know if I missed it or if you didn't say.
Oh, refine the budget process was Morgan Scott.
Thank you. Did I miss it?
He mentioned it, but it's, yeah.
Okay.
That is the end of the bullet points?
If I can, Mayor, I'd like to just wrap up before Ryan takes your questions or we try to answer them. The way that I plan to use the strategic plan is to help build our culture in our organization. So a couple of key philosophies that came out of this is first, in any good organization, you start with your employees. So this is really about giving employees direction, and I believe if you take care of employees, they'll take care of your customers and everything. So when I talk about employees first, I don't mean easy. I don't mean, you know, don't have to do anything. I think it means respect and then accountability. So those are a few things, employees. Second, we are customer-focused. We look at things from the customer's point of view, not ours, and I think we've started that on a few of the processes we're looking at. And then in everything that we do, are we enhancing our brand philosophy, and are we furthering our mission of inspiring a vibrant community? And that's really how I plan to use this after you guys finish, you know, adjusting it, but I can't be more proud of the organization and the staff that came together to put this together. So thank you to them, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of what I plan to use this. It'll help with budget decisions, it'll help with organizational decisions, it'll help with day-to-day decisions, and it is a useful tool, not just something that we look at once a year.
And I can add to that, that just, we've gone through this enough now with department heads, with the organizational leaders, that there's no way, they don't have an excuse for not knowing, you know, where we stand and where we're at. I think it starts there, and I think it's been just the process in itself has helped them.
Great. Well, I appreciate all your work on this. I think it's a very creative way to approach the strategic plan this year, and I think the collaboration between staff and council went seamlessly, so thank you. Do we have anything to add or comments from council on this?
Is that going to be an I Love Cottonwood campaign or an I Am Cottonwood?
If I can take that, we're running into trademark issues with the heart, believe it or not. So we're dancing around, we'll bring something back for review when we have something that we think won't get us into trouble.
Spell it out or something. I just think of I Am Cottonwood, that could backfire.
Right. We won't start without you guys. So we're working on it, is the best way.
And the heart was Councilmember Matthews', you know, brainchild from that two days of strategic planning for those of you that don't know.
And it was, it's a great idea. We ran with it, and we'll bring it back.
It's baby.
We started with the heart and ran into some trademark issues and whatnot. I guess if we make our own heart, we can maybe make it a different shape or color, maybe, but we'll bring something back.
Wine-colored.
Exactly.
I just see I Am Cottonwood, one of those mugshots we see in the paper, wearing an I Am Cottonwood shirt.
Hi.
Okay.
Do you want to comment now, or would you rather?
Yeah, I think if, we do have a lot of public here to speak on the strategic plan tonight. We can take those public comments now, or is there anything else that council wants to add before we do?
I have some comments, but I'd also like to hear from the public.
Okay.
They may address my comments.
I was just going to say, great job to Ryan for leading this, and great job to Mr. Corbin for delegating it. I like that. And to everybody who was a lead, you guys did a great job. Very impressed.
I could not have done it this well. I could not have.
This was not me. I'm going to pass that down to the leads. They had all those conversations, and really, I mean, it's the employees that had the ideas, so it's nice.
Great.
Yeah, it's a very exciting start.
Yes.
All right, well, folks, if you would like to address the council, you're more than welcome. We do limit speakers to five minutes, and we have several forms filled out, but if there's anybody else here in the audience tonight, there should be yellow forms back there. You can fill them out and hand them up to us, and we'll get you up here in front of council. So I'm going to call up Mr. Mike Sullivan. Good evening.
First of all, my name's Mike Sullivan, and I live in Cottonwood. And I had the opportunity to look at the strategic plan, excuse me, that you're proposing here, too, and I like the plan. It looks like a great plan from my perspective. I see one area that we would have some conflict there, and the conflict would be when it comes to the quality of life portion, when we're looking at expanding an airport community, which we're in the process of doing now. The airport made a larger, brought in a new fixed base operator. We're looking at bringing in jet turbines, jet A fuel. Well, we have an airport that sits right in the middle of the heart of a town, and already, the citizens, like was brought up in this, too, you want more citizen involvement, their reactions, their input, and that's what I'm trying to, excuse me, I'm losing my voice a little bit, trying to provide tonight, is input from the citizens. I'm actually representing a group called the Citizens Action Group for the airport community. What we're doing is opposing the expansion of the airport and trying to see what we can do about reducing noise, noise abatement, because in the lion's share of the community, the folks all over, in Cottonwood and Clarkdale and other areas, are being impacted by this airport and the noise from the planes. And as a result of it, people are unhappy about it, they can't live outside, their quality of life goes downhill, and it's exactly what we're trying to do. I see promoting the vineyards. I mean, you know, the wine program out there, too. People can't be outside when planes are flying over the top and continuing to make all the noise during the daytime hours. That's weekends and weekdays, too. And with the expansion of the airport now, they're looking at several things that they're planning to do. Make the runway longer to be able to take the jets. They're also trying, they tried working with this, too. I went with Morgan Scott to Prescott, where we met with the flight schools over in Prescott. And Morgan Scott, we had one of the airport commissioners, we had Sid Lloyd from Kestrel Aviation, and we met with four different flight schools, and every one of those flight schools was very interactive with us, wanted to see how they could help us in our plight to try and reduce noise. Like Parker Northrup over at Embry-Riddle says, hey, let me take it back to my folks and see if we can reduce the amount of flights that we do over here. Tac Arrow, who trains bush pilots, what they were doing is they shortened up their turns so that when they come about, but the thing is, the problem we've got, we're talking about four flight schools there, and now we're talking about expanding this airport and making it worse for the citizens that live in the flight patterns in the surrounding areas. My wife goes just up to, she hikes up to what we call the posts up there at a dead horse campground, and all she hears is planes flying over there, too. You can't get away from them during the daytime. And I talked with Morgan about a week ago, and he told me that the city's come to their solution, and, which really kind of surprised me, and I give, Morgan's got to have an opportunity to be able to come up and say his side of this, too, because he was great to work with this entire seven, eight months that we'd been working together, trying to find a solution where we got no help whatsoever, really, from the airport commissioners. They were just protecting their own nest, they really were over there. And the pilots, while they were wonderful over there in Prescott, trying to see what they could help us with, the pilots over here, they come in and try and torpedo anything you had, saying, we've been here since 1940, you built your houses right in the way. Well, we didn't build the houses right in the way, the city expanded around there. The city's signing navigation agreements so that the residents can't complain about this. And this is just the tip of the iceberg right now, where we're at now, with what I'm bringing to you folks, because of the fact that the airport's going to expand, the vineyard is just now getting really going, we're going to start building all these houses, and they're right at the heart of where these planes are going to be taking off. If we don't do something about addressing this issue right away, we're going to be, we're going to be in a problem where we're not going to be able to find a solution in any short order, and we can't say that we're looking for quality, for an improved quality of life here if the citizens can't take advantage of a quiet environment. Quiet meaning just normal. And nothing started before about...
Mr. Sullivan, I'm sorry, your five minutes is up, sir.
Okay. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Okay, up next is Terry Clements. Evening.
Hi, I'm Terry Clements, and I live in Cottonwood, Arizona. I just want to start out by saying that I'm glad to be able to speak and that you've asked for input from the public on the strategic plan, which I also took a look at, and I think it's a great plan. I think it has a lot of really nice components. I agree with the previous speaker when it comes to the promote quality of life portion of it, because to me, everything else is a nonstarter without that. It's the quality of life in a community that enables that community, I think, to attract people to come in and live there and work there and so on. And I think that all of your other priorities kind of follow onto that. If you can show that this community, and I think the communities that do this are going to be the successful ones, if you can show that we have a good quality of life for residents and visitors alike, then people are drawn to the community, so that helps with your, you know, your other goals that you have, like economic growth. I'd like to talk about what I think is a serious threat to our quality of life, and that's our airport. I happen to live near the airport, but I have friends that live two, three, four miles away, and they're impacted as well. We're a pretty small town. We're not spread out. I grew up in Phoenix. You know, Phoenix is huge. We're small. You can hear things, things that always kind of bounces off the mountain. And I have to say that when I bought here 12 years ago, and I was living here, but in something that I hadn't bought since about 2000, I liked, you know, being near the airport. It's a quiet little, was a quiet little rural airport. I like the idea that there were little planes flying in and out. But I've also been in areas where airports are busy and noisy. They're not in the middle of little towns. You know, little towns have little tiny airports that people don't mind, but if a community... But if a community suddenly decides it wants to expand the role of that airport and wants it to be a busy, noisy kind of place, that's a different thing altogether. And those kinds of airports are typically built outside of the city limits. And if they weren't, if it weren't outside, what would happen? People's enjoyment of their property would be jeopardized, which is one reason they do it. People's property values would go down, which is another reason they do it. So, and, you know, people wouldn't have the desire to come here and live here. So I, I think, personally, I think the council should think very hard about this. Because if you wanna think about recreation and the things that draw people to the Verde Valley and to Cottonwood, which I think is a wonderful, I've spoken on that in the past, I think that's a wonderful thing. The wine thing is a wonderful thing, this directly conflicts with it. And at what cost, and at what benefit? The cost benefit analysis to me is out of whack, and I think more needs to be done on that. If a few people have a benefit there, that's fine. But if a lot of people are impacted negatively, that's something I think the council needs to consider. So, I just wanna go on record as saying that I am against any expansion of our airport and its level of business, including expanding the red, the runways, repairs, maintenance, or anything else that would increase the level of noise or adversely impact air quality over what has been done historically at the airport, which we all bought into, and selling jet fuel to encourage more jets to land here. I understand that much of the increased traffic of late is due to problems with at least one of the schools, I think, in Prescott, that is, has some construction that's ongoing. And that's understandable, it's gonna go on for a while. I understand that we have city staff working with them. And I would just like to strongly support that effort and encourage the city council to do the same. And to do whatever is necessary at any level in city government to ensure that that problem is resolved as well. And lastly, I'd like to bring up one other issue with regard to the airport. And it's a problem for many of us, it's been a problem for a few years now. And it's the light at the airport. Many of us were assured by the then-city council members, I don't think any of them are here tonight, that the new light would be the same as the old light. That's simply not true. The new light is higher, it's brighter, it has a strobe effect that impacts on many of us who live within two miles. And it's so bad that I don't sit outside at night because of the strobe effect. But I just wanna say that recently I was made aware that that, that the adverse effects of that light can be mitigated. And so I would like to urge the, the council to direct city staff to come up with a proposal to do that as soon as possible, to mitigate the effects, the negative effects of that light. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Clements, appreciate it. Up next, we have Anita McCann. Hope I pronounced that correctly.
You did, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I appreciate you hearing me. I should only take one minute because I'm gonna say almost exactly what the last two speakers have said. My name is Anita McCann and I live at 2050 West State Route 89A at Pine Shadows in Cottonwood. The issue of the airport noise that's affecting our quality of life is really not a recent one. Last September, there was an article that appeared in the Cottonwood Journal titled Airport Neighbors Complain of Noise. And in that article, there was an explanation of why there was an increase in aircraft noise. And that is because the student pilots were coming here from Prescott because they were having a problem with their runway. And it was, the one runway was closed. But according to Parker Northrup there, the, he's the department chair at Embry-Riddle, Aeronautical University in Prescott. He said the student pilots obeyed all the noise rules at the Cottonwood Airport and went beyond them to avoid takeoffs before 8:30 in the morning so it wouldn't impact the residents close by. And that at the end of August, the students were supposed to return to Prescott. Well, anyway, during that time, I did keep a log of the times and I read them at the airport commission meeting. And I'm not gonna read them all here now because you don't need to take the time. But at that time, they started, the noise started between 6:30 and 7:00 in the morning. And sometimes every few minutes, eight, nine planes at a time. Or I'm saying one after another. When we moved here two years ago, and I love this city, there was an airport and here and there some noise, but nothing, it's getting worse and worse. I've called to register complaints with the airport manager and I know he's probably tired of hearing from me. And then I finally did call your office, Mr. Mayor. It seems that the Embry-Riddle pilots are not, in fact, gonna go back to Prescott, but they're gonna stay here. Anyway, the noise is affecting our quality of life. And specifically where I live and where other people live, I've heard. And it, I don't think it's gonna improve if they expand that airport. On a positive note, I did notice last Saturday, when they had opened another runway, I think they called it one that was favorable if the winds were high, they'd take off a certain way. My husband noticed about eight planes took off the other direction and we heard hardly anything. It was amazingly less noise. So I'm not sure what they're gonna do with the runways. But I did a couple of times see planes come so close you could almost shake the pilot's hand. Just saying. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McCann, appreciate it. Okay, next up is Len Howard.
Good evening.
Evening.
And thank you again for having this open meeting. I've never been involved in community council information, anything at all. So please forgive me if I do any faux pas. I live at Pine Shadows and we bought eleven months ago. And we invested about thirty, maybe thirty-five thousand dollars in renovations and spent the money locally. And then something happened and I became aware. I happened to start working in Sedona last July. And so I was away from home two, three days a week. And we travel a lot. And I have five children, four grandchildren, weddings, whatever, you know, so we were gone a lot. But I'm, I'm recovering from surgeries and there will be more, so I was home every day. And I think Mayor Olensky, I think I almost owe you an apology, you're a nice man. But I sent logs of emails to both Mr. Scott and to Mayor Olensky, just sort of venting. And, and I'm not real proud of that, I know that there's a better way to do it. I congratulate Mike Sullivan for approaching it a little more professionally. I did send a letter though recently thanking for less noise. It was such a pleasure and I don't know whether it was the cloudy days. But, but Sunday, you know, it came back and I didn't know if it was the student pilots or the locals. A little bit of background, I was married to a pilot. My husband retired from the FAA. So I understand the communication barriers. I liked what Ryan said about the quality of life in Cottonwood being citizen driven. And it gives me reassurance that this fast growing community, I mean, we looked a lot of places. Reno, Prescott, you know, Payson. This won our heart and we have not even been here a year and we don't wanna leave. Like I say, I work in Sedona, I spend in Cottonwood. And a little bit of background, I retired from FedEx. And I liked what Mr. Corbin said about valuing employees. Because FedEx, Southwest, just a few companies really empower their employees to do the right thing for the right reason. And also that you believe in being customer focused. And I'd like to think that I am a message carrier. Because if I love something, I let everybody know. And I would like more people to come to Cottonwood. Because it's a growing, beautiful, quaint treasure. And now, if we can get a commitment from the council to put, you know, our group on the, on the agenda and do some research and really help find a solution, I would be willing to invest in a decibel meter data recorder and be of assistance in any way possible. I don't wanna move. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. And I do receive your emails.
You really are a nice man.
And I was heartened when you said it was a good day and I thought, well, that's good.
Okay, I want to give you the good feedback.
All right, no, I appreciate that. Okay, up next is Donna Fulton. Evening.
Donna Fulton, Cottonwood resident. And I'm here also for, against expansion of the airport. And, you know, I, we bought our house in '06 and, you know, it was a sleepy airport, really nice commuter type airport, people that had planes for pleasure or whatever. And it was great, I, I enjoyed it too. Since then, things have really escalated, you know, there's, for one thing, there's a lot more helicopter noise at night. I'm talking like nine, 10 o'clock at night. And I don't know what that's about, if some of it's for, you know, medical transportation reasons, that's one thing, but I don't know. And, you know, I, I would hate to think that the noise, it's gonna get noisier, you know, with some of the things that are in the works right now. With turbine engines and, you know, jet fuel and the rest of that. And, you know, and the other thing too is that darn light. It's extremely frustrating 'cause I can't even look out my window up at the stars at night, you know, or go outside or enjoy, enjoy my backyard with friends. It's this strobe that seems to go like boom, 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 boom. And it's, you know, strobe light does, it doesn't have a good effect on the human psyche. So if something could be done about that, I would really, really appreciate it. So thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, thanks for being here this evening. Okay, last on the list, but certainly we'll, we'll hear from more if there's anyone else out there tonight that'd like to speak to us. But last on the list is Barbara Shlenoff.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm Barbara Shlenoff, I've lived in Cottonwood for over twenty years. I'm not gonna repeat what a lot of people have said already other than to say that I'm very, very concerned about the expansion of the airport and the new businesses that would be involved with that, with jet fuel, et cetera. I've lived here for long enough to see Cottonwood itself change and change for the better. Okay, I'm very involved with the wine industry. I go to various events here in town, walking on Main, the Verde Valley Wine Festival. And I meet a lot of people from out of the state and from Tucson and the Phoenix area who just love it up here. And to a man say, and a woman say to me, gee, when I retire, I wanna move up here. I just love the quality of life. And I go, where do you wanna live? And they say, oh, Cottonwood, Clarkdale. I say, what about Sedona? And they all say the same thing, no, I don't wanna move to Sedona. I've heard enough about what's going on there. I don't want Cottonwood to end up with that kind of reputation, okay? I love it for what it is now. And the other point that I wanna bring up that no one has addressed that I'm very concerned about is there have been accidents at the airport. Several months ago, there was a plane that took off that crashed into a neighborhood. No one was hurt, but it could have been a lot worse. And that concerns me because if we have jets, we have student pilots taking off and landing, et cetera. That can prove and to, you know, be impactful unto our way of life. The other thing as regards to the wine industry, the bypass up to Jerome has several wine tasting rooms. We have several wine tasting rooms here. We have the Southwest Wine Center of the college. In the spring and the fall, when you can sit outside, it is awful to sit outside and hear the planes taking off and landing. And it happens all the time. It doesn't bode well for us as a community to say, well, we want you to come and taste our wine to put up with the noise. And I think we have to sort of go above that and treat it a little bit differently. And as it addresses the lights, the strobe light that's been discussed. The problem also is not only that it makes that light sound, it also, excuse me, ricochets off the buildings, the other houses. So you might not see it directly in your line of vision, but it hits the building down the, across the covert and bounces back at you. So anyway, you look at it, the quality of life has been affected. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shlenoff. Anyone else here tonight that would like to address the council? Mr. Corbin, do you wanna provide just a brief update? I know this is something that, we've heard you loud and clear, at least I know I have. And we're gathering information, we're certainly not gonna ignore the issue. But did you wanna provide an update on where we are?
No, yes, we, no, not really. Love to, Mr. Mayor, in all seriousness. I also get those emails, both, both the mayor and Mr. Scott are kind enough to share, I believe all, if not most of those emails with me, and we are working on it. We did meet with some of the commission, airport commission, after the meeting with the schools. And we presented some possible mitigating options to the airport commission. And we were given some direction to come back to them with some tweaks and some additions to that. So we are looking through some deals with the handshake deals, let's say, with the schools over there. We are limited on what we can tell them to do and not to do after their wheels leave the ground. But we are, we are working with them, that is ongoing, we're working with the commission, that is ongoing. The light is a new one for me, so I'm gonna have to ask Mr. Scott about that and we'll, we'll look into that and I'll report back to council on that. Especially if there are mitigating things that we can do. And same thing with the helicopter, that is also new to me that we now have a helicopter issue at night. We don't have anybody at the airport at night, the FBI does not work at night, so it's hard for us to know what's going on, but we can clearly look into it. I mean, there's not that many helicopters going in and out. So, you know, we're looking at air traffic patterns. The commission, I can tell you, was very concerned about safety when it came to changing the patterns. And the minute that some of the schools started changing patterns, it didn't reduce the complaints, it changed the people who are complaining. So the very day they started doing that, we received complaints from other people. So it was just, it didn't do. Some of the things that we are going to try to do should help, including not allowing, and Mr. Scott, you left a correct, using the wrong language, but the touch and goes, where they would be forced to go back to the beginning of the runway so that they're higher when they get over the houses. Whereas the touch and go, they're kind of leaving from the middle. And so they're lower to the ground, as someone said, the handshake of the, of the, of the pilots. So we are looking at some things that will be able to mitigate the noise. We're just not there yet, we haven't, we haven't sealed the deal, let's say. But we are working diligently on solutions to the best that we can.
Okay. It's a complex issue, I know, because it involves FAA and a lot of federal money that's poured into the airport and everything else. But we do, we do hear you and do...
Well, the, if I can, Mr. Mayor, you're right about the federal money. The federal money's what limits our ability to fix things. Because everything we do has to be approved by the FAA or almost everything that we do, including this handshake deal. If we can even get the FAA to consider this deal, that is huge. Because it's not normal for us to be able to force any of the, of the things that we're asking of those schools. And if the schools were to push back, we don't know where our negotiation power lies. And it, so it's not really, it's that, it's that accepting of that money over the last however many years that really hampers our ability to force certain things.
Right. Well, I would just encourage folks that are concerned about the airport to stay tuned and it will be...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Before council, before too long. So, thank you. Counsel, any other comments on the strategic plan?
I just had a really quick comment on that.
Sure.
I did want to, you know, I appreciate hearing from the public. Clearly, as we are growing, council does need to balance and/or address the concerns with traffic and noise and our quality of life here, and it's only going to be more challenging as we continue growing, but thank you for the feedback, and again, we will be addressing this later. Back on the, the big, you know, the strategic plan as a whole, I wanted to echo what my fellow council members said earlier. I was excited to hear about the, the feedback from so many of the different, different staff, and I appreciated the change in, well, completely changed procedure, but also putting a different set of eyes on each different initiative was refreshing, and I really liked that. I, I feel that personally that this strategic plan addresses the items that we discussed at the strategic planning session earlier in, in the year in January. I think you did a very nice job of framing each of those items. My only request would be that perhaps we order some of the items under each main initiative by order of importance, so that we start with our most important one. And I'm just going to give one example in the interest of time, and it, just for number one, because that's the first one. To me, number four, creating and maintaining a business-friendly and customer-focused community and A through E underneath it should be our number one. And I don't think that, that the plan, the plan was, most likely was not developed in order of, these are our most important priorities first, and that would be my only request. Let's start with our most important item first as number one, and then order them like that, so that if somebody picks this up, they can really see right away what is the most important part. And I think, I had comments for all of them as far as what, what our priorities are. Otherwise, I think this looks great, and again, really exciting and refreshing to have all of this involvement from staff and feedback.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Henry, if you could send me, if you said you made comments about the priorities, if you could send those to me, we'd be happy. We actually didn't even have them numbered at first, and I believe it was, Chief Gazelle's not here, but he said we probably should number them, better to label them, and so we did not prioritize them in any manner. Really, we'll take that lead from you, from this, from the council, and, and your priorities will become our priority. So I'm very open to any order that you want to give to the strategic plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't, you know, I didn't assume that they were ordered based on priority, and I'm fine if council wants to put, you know, number one as the top priority. I think it makes sense for when you're, when you're reading it. I didn't really go through it with that in mind. Plus, I know Ron promised to have all these done within 12 months, so I wasn't too concerned about it.
For the record, Mr. Mayor, I did not.
Sounds good, though.
Sounds good, doesn't it?
Why not?
Let's do it.
It did say 2019 to 2020, so, you know.
Right. But we'll, we'll bring this back then to vote on, right?
If that's, if they're, given the changes, absolutely, we can do that. And I, I'll be honest with you, my staff is smarter than I. They warned me that you guys might try to hold me to getting all of it done in 2020. So some of the word choices that my staff recommended was trying to give me an out, just in case we didn't quite get it all done. So thank you, staff, for having my back.
They, they have your back, yeah. They're, they're smarter than that. All right, well, if, I guess if council would like to direct your, you know, preferences as far as priority to, to Mr. Corbin, then we can bring it back to
Yes.
For a vote later.
Mr. Mayor, so for that, if they want to send that to me, I'll reorder it based on the feedback I get for those that are interested, and then when we, we can come back in April, not put this off too much longer in the order, and you guys can vote on it. But it, but I really am curious if there's any other feedback on, on the actual topics.
I think it looks great.
I believe it's very, sir.
Did it really make sense?
Good.
Thank you.
Okay. Will do, sir.
Okay. All right, then we will move on to item two, which is review discussion, possible direction to staff regarding the in-progress hiring process for the reclassified presiding magistrate position. So as you know, we, months, some months back, decided to reclassify our magistrate position and, and open this position up, and there were a total of 17 applications received.
Mr. Mayor, that is correct.
Which were narrowed down to seven, which were interviewed last night by telephone by Councilmember Althouse, myself, visiting attorney from Sedona, Mr. Robert Pecels, as well as Amanda Wilber, and Mr. Horton was in just listening, and of course, manager Ron Corbin was there. So we've, we've narrowed it down to a final, from seven down to a final list of highly qualified applicants, five highly qualified applicants. This is really on the agenda tonight, just to, just to touch base with council, make sure that we're, you know, we're going down the right track here. If you have any questions, we can answer those tonight.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add, it was, the top five that we're recommending to come forward were unanimous. It wasn't debatable. They were heads in, above the other two that we interviewed. They are all highly qualified. They all are attorneys. They all, it just, I was impressed with the, the caliber of our applicants. It's amazing. Just for the record, we had more qualified applicants than Sedona did when they advertised their job. I go back to quality of life, I think we have something to offer here. And so we currently have scheduled for March 26, I believe it is, a special session where these five would be interviewed in public here, like we did with the council vacancy. We would, HR Director Wilber will do a reference checks on those five applicants. So in your packet will, of course, be their resumes, their, the items they supplied, and then the reference checks performed by our Human Resources Department. And then I will, as we did before, send you some draft questions, let you guys modify those if you so desire, and then we'll have those questions ready for council. We will, we will arrange the interview, you know, the times and all of those kinds of things, but we are set up for the 26th unless we receive different direction.
Anything to add from council?
Thank you.
Just heading down the right track here, we're all, okay. I think it's just, again, important to note that the, you know, all applicants were very highly qualified, but the, the top five was the top five of all of the interviewers, so.
I'll just, yes, they were. Yes, absolutely. I'll just add, just so the rest of the council knows, I am actually on vacation, and I won't be here on the 26th, so I won't participate in that final selection, but the fact that I was able to participate in the screening, the pre-interview, I'm 100% confident that the six of you will do a great job choosing between the, the five that rose to the top. And so I just wanted all of council to know that I will be more than four hours away, and I'm not driving down here for that.
We appreciate that. No worries. Thank you. Okay. If there's nothing else, then we can move into the last item on the agenda tonight, which is pre-budget presentations from the following city departments, municipal court, water utility, wastewater utility, and fire and medical department. Evening.
Good evening. Hi, Aaron Council. Kirsten Lennon, the Financial Services Director for the city. And tonight, as you mentioned, we're going to hear from the municipal court, water utility, wastewater utility, and fire and medical department in that order, and I will let them introduce themselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is definitely out of my comfort zone, so.
You'll do fine. Thanks for being here.
Okay. I'm Lynn Reardon, and I'm your court administrator, and I actually wrote this down because I don't do all of this presenting thing. I think you have what we did for our budget that's required by all the departments, and our budget really doesn't change much from year to year. The court's running as efficiently as possible. With the staff that we have, we are very short-staffed, have been for years, and I'm here going to ask you again for another clerk, maybe even part-time clerk. Our staff is extremely efficient, they're very excellent, they're very dedicated, they're unbelievably hardworking, and I don't think you could get a better staff than what we have there at the clerk's office. We also have an excellent prosecuting attorney and very good defense attorneys, so everyone works well together. We have had a steady increase in case filings in the last year. I'm sure you see all of the department reports that are presented to you from the presiding judge, and it is true that our case filings have increased by over 30% last year. However, don't plan on that to continue. I think that is a result of increase in residency as well as visitors, and our public, our police department now is fully staffed. So we had this huge influx. I don't think it's going to stay there. I think realistically you can count on an eight to 12% annual increase in case filings. 30% is just a little steep. It won't stay there, I don't think.
You hope not.
I really hope not, but I don't expect it to at all. A result of that is an increase in revenues. That's not our job. We're not in the business of creating revenue, but it is a byproduct of what we do. So our revenues have jumped quite a bit. The tail end of that, they'll probably stay up for a few more months, or at least until the end of this fiscal year, and then you can probably plan on seeing those level off. So far, does any of this make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Last year, we transitioned into the new statewide case management system, which is Ajax. It was a little bit rough at first. We really like it now. It has given us some tools that have helped us and you. We now notify all of our defendants and other parties, attorneys included, payments due, counseling due, court dates by text messaging, and it's all automated. And we've gone paperless with our civil traffic, which is also, I think we're the only one in the county that took that on, and we really like it. All civil traffic citations now are paperless, and by the end of this fiscal year, we hope that all of our old civil traffic that's in default and in collections and things is also, will be in that paperless system. So we're trying to reduce some of the paperwork, which will make the staff even more efficient. That's the plan. I'll tell you about it next year. Successful that is. Right now, it's working quite well. Our case filings increase, but I need you to remember that in the municipal court, 60% roughly of those case filings are civil traffic, which are handled administratively, predominantly by staff or defensive driving school or some other resolution other than going to court. We have trials, but they're usually only two or three a week. It's not a huge number. What else do I need to tell you? I need to tell you that, let's see, we have had a part-time experienced clerk come in a couple of months last fall, and again now, she's just at the end of another three-month period, and I've applied for a JSE grant, I'm waiting for signatures on, actually, to keep her until the end of the budget year. I inherited a backlog of five years of retention and destruction files that did not get taken care of. She's helped us get up to about two years behind, so our backlog isn't as bad. That's another reason we'd need another, we'd like to have another staff person. It's one of those things where we can't let it just go because it's mandated by the Supreme Court. We're kind of stuck in that, that little trench there. We have you guys giving us direction, and then we have legislative and Supreme Court mandates, so we kind of have to follow everybody's rules, and sometimes it's real difficult to do. So I know that you guys are trying to reduce the budget and reduce staff, and I'm standing here asking you for another clerk, but we would very much appreciate it if you could find it in the budget to give us another clerk, and even if it's a part-time position, a permanent part-time position, it would be very helpful. Then we could get caught up on our retention schedules and keep going with our paperless system that we're trying to accomplish. The other thing that I'm asking for is a part-time security officer. I applied for a grant, it was summarily denied. The Supreme Court's not giving any grants for staff this year. Judge Mackey let us know that. And so I did talk to Mr. Horton, our city attorney, and he did advise us that the court enhancement funds would probably be a good use for that. It's not a full-time position. We are hoping that it would be part-time at some point in the future, and it won't be this year, probably two years from now. We're hoping that the county will have a security staff and department that we can enter into an IGA and have them provide that. So we are not asking for a long-term, full-time position for security. We're asking for a part-time year-to-year, because we've put in grant, in requests for grants, and you'll see in our CIP requests that those, there's a big amount of money, and I know that, that we have applied for grants for those items also. If we get them, we'll ask for no money. If we don't get them, we'll be asking for you to allow us to use our court enhancement funds, which is not from the general fund, to meet those requirements from the Supreme Court mandates for security. And we may also like to use that money for the part-time security officer on a year-to-year basis, until and if we get an IGA with the county at some point in the future.
So the security position, need to be clear, is mandated by the Supreme Court?
Well, when we put in our request for the security equipment, the first thing that came back from the Supreme Court is who's going to man it. And they're not going to give us any money for a person to man it. So it's not, they didn't say we couldn't have the security equipment. Our grant would not be approved if we didn't have it, but it would probably, I can't see any reason for us to have it, but it's going to sit in the closet.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add, the security of the courthouse is mandated by the Supreme Court. How we get there, we probably have a little leeway, but we should did put in a grant for the equipment, but I can't have our clerks running the security equipment, the, the metal detector, those kinds of things. This would be a non-benefited 19-hour-at-max position, so no retirement, no medical benefits, paid not out of the general fund, it would be paid out of the court enhancement funds. So there would be no, you know, impact to the general fund. And then again, when the county actually has their own security department, they would help not just our court, but other local jurisdiction courts with security, because it is not a full-time job, and I don't believe we ever see it being a full-time job. It's really when the court is open for business, not the, they're behind glass, we're adding bulletproof glasses in places, we have other security measures in place. So this is really just about the courtroom, if I.
The mandate is for the standard courtroom, right? Or any contested matters that have to do with injunctions of harassment or to orders of protection. I'm thinking it's going to be 16 to 19 hours.
Got it. Okay. And do we need to, I mean, is, is that on the horizon that the county will pay for this security position?
Oh, they won't pay for it. Mr. Mayor, they, they won't pay for it. They will provide the employee, and will enter an IGA with some arrangement for payment. Our assumption is that it'll be easier to get an employee, they won't be our employee, we won't have to pay the benefits, we won't have to pay the vacation and holiday, and they'll have a responsibility to always make sure that we have someone there during our open hours.
Would be a contractual thing.
Right.
But it would be not soon.
And not free.
And not free.
Okay, I understand. Okay. So then, I mean, is the court enhancement fund, I guess what I'm getting at, is that going to be a viable, you know, sustainable revenue stream for this?
In the near future, yes.
Okay.
And that continues to grow. We collect those funds on a regular basis. Likewise, the bulletproof glass, we've done all of our security so far with either grant funding or with court enhancement money. And the other grant that we applied for was for the bulletproof glass. I don't know that we're going to get it for the entire building. Our priority was those large windows where the clerks sit, and we are hopeful that that will be granted. If not, we're going to, hopefully, we'll let us use our court enhancement funds to meet that security requirement.
Got it.
So that's all.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Reardon?
No, thank you.
No? Great job, thank you.
Want to be excused?
Yes.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Okay, we have water utility up next.
I have lots of chores to do. Good night.
Evening, Mr. Biggs.
I'm fine, sir. Mayor, council. I'm Roger Biggs. I'm the utility director. And tonight, we're going to talk about utilities, goals and accomplishments. Let me start with some numbers. Basically, utilities by the numbers. Utility department is 28 staff. We have six in wastewater, 14 in water, and eight in various administrative management support and billing positions. We operate 28 water production wells, producing 815 million gallons a year. We operate four monitoring wells and three irrigation wells in addition to the, the water production wells. We have 170 miles plus of water lines that we take care of. Doesn't sound like a lot until you get out there and start to walk. We take care of eighteen arsenic treatment systems. Not all of our wells require arsenic treatment, but the vast majority do. We run two wastewater plants, six sewageless stations. We have eighty miles of sewer lines in the city, within city limits. We operate fourteen emergency generators at our sites. And during the snow event a week before last, ten of those fourteen ran. For about ninety minutes, the entire city's wastewater system was running out of generators. We lost power at all our sites. And everything just ran seamlessly, so... It's a good investment, isn't it? In addition to the daily activities, we manage the irrigation of the community garden. We don't run the ditch, but we try and get water from the ditch to the garden. We have various educational programs, tours, public outreach programs. It kind of ties in nicely to the strategic initiative. We, through an IGA with the state, we are the operators of record for Deadwood State Park. We run their water and wastewater systems. Let's talk about the water utility. Twenty-nineteen, we repaired a hundred-and-ten water system leaks. That's a dramatic improvement over past years. We see a reduction every year, but it's never gonna get down to zero. It's kind of like painting the Golden Gate Bridge. Start at one end and just keep going. As far as the arsenic treatment goes, we ran fourteen-hundred in-house, basically process control tests on the arsenic treatment systems. We did a hundred-and-nineteen, a hundred-and-twenty through a laboratory for compliance. Ninety-nine percent compliant with arsenic regulations. Conducted six tours of the riverfront plant. It's not exactly a water thing, but it was kind of handled by water staff. And we anticipate more tours next year. The public outreach, tours, and educational programs, those tend to fluctuate based on public interest. The more people get interested, the more tours and programs are brought, so it's kind of driven by the public needs. Let's talk about our accomplishments. After a long delay, we finally completed the water main on North Willard. So it's an interesting little project. Basically, we had customers who had very poor water quality and a water main that was held together by Band-Aids. It took us a long time to accomplish it. There were a lot of land acquisition issues and roadblocks, but it's done. The people have good water, and we haven't had to go back and repair the line since, so... I referred earlier to generators. On the water side, we bought two new generators, one to replace an older unit. And that unit was taken out, refurbished, and installed at another well site. So basically, we got three generators. We cost it two. They were installed at Verde Santa Fe and a well seven-two in Verde Village. These are critical sites and have a history of power problems, especially during monsoons. We did all the site work ourselves, all the concrete work, all the cabling, all the electrical was all done in-house. We're replacing the resin-based arsenic media in Verde Village wells. This is going to be a multi-year program. The resin media costs roughly three-hundred dollars a cubic foot. So cost per site ranges from fifteen thousand dollars up to about ninety thousand per site. And we've got fourteen Verde Village well sites that require it. So we're starting with the highest priority, worst site first, and proceeding through all of them until they're complete. We've accomplished two so far. There's another load of media on order. It's a long lead item. It takes about ten weeks for us to get it after we order it, and has very limited shelf life, so we don't store it. We replaced a six-year-old water main down here at the wash between Willard and Bings. That was an interesting project. We had to dig two twenty-foot-deep vertical shafts outside the wash. I wanted to accomplish this without putting our staff down in these holes. So basically, we dug shafts, delighted them at the bottom in the wash, they were able to drop pipe down, make the connections, and we did it without disturbing the historic rockwork that supports the bridge. It was kind of a, it was a very interesting project, required a lot of pre-planning and working with city engineers. So it went off without a hitch. Took us a long time to do it, but there was no damage. And once we were finished, Bings has much better water. The wash is back. Looks like we were never there, so everything went well. We, it's interesting, the water system supplies, the well that's up on the hill at Willard and Highway eighty-nine, water from that well goes all the way out to Frank Carroll Lake. And it's gravity on that side, so by the time it gets down to Frank Carroll, we're looking at over a hundred-and-ten PSI. It's hard on those pipes out in there, so we had to go over and install a device to basically reduce the pressure. That has been a project that was on our books for several years, and we accomplished it finally. Our goals for next year, we're going to install a well on Highway two-sixty by D and K Cycle. The well's already there. We're going to go in and put in storage, pumping facilities, arsenic treatment. And that is to bolster not only Verde Village water system, city's water system as well. It's kind of an acute location. And it's in the engineering phase now, the design phase. It's nearly done as far as design. There's water plumbing involved, so that should kick off here within the next few months. Big goal for this year, we're going to work very hard to simplify the customer signup process in the utility department. It's very cumbersome, requires a lot of antiquated moves on the customer's part, a lot of ID requirements. And it's all done basically manually. You need to come in, do it in person. This is something we're working to accomplish. We want to do it online, make it very seamless and easy for the customer to do. And we'll get it done. And as of a few hours ago, we completed the water line. I won't say we completed it, but we completed the bulk of the main construction of the water line on eighty-nine A for the residents that were impacted by the TCE plume. The final stage was six hundred feet, and then we finished it just this afternoon. We've gotta go back and clean things up. Basically, the construction's complete. And on the wastewater side, we treated three-hundred-and-forty-six million gallons of wastewater. That's up from the year before, and it'll be probably up a little more next year. Sold twenty-one million gallons of reclaimed water. And we've got an ongoing program in the wastewater department. It's a multi-year program. One year, we videotape. Next year, we clean and do point repairs. Basically, they line the inside of the sewer lines. They use an epoxy. They insert it in the line, blow it up, and it's like a new line. It doesn't have to be dug up, and it doesn't take things out of service for days. And it's kind of a rotating program. One year's clean, one year's repair, and we go back to clean the next year. It's just, cost is about ninety thousand a year, clean and repair. But when you look at the cost of the sewer system and the cost of damage to the sewer system, it's good maintenance. Our accomplishments. Most of these projects were done in-house as well. A few years ago, we installed a new ultraviolet disinfection system up at the Mingus plant. Huge project, a lot of cost. It's great equipment. Unfortunately, it was sitting out in the sun, and we were starting to see already areas of decay. Cabling was getting red and things like this. The wastewater crew bought a large metal roof. They installed it themselves up there. It'll cut down on damage to the equipment. It also makes it easier to work on the equipment. There's a fair amount of maintenance involved in it, and it just makes it easier. The city's reclaimed water is sold to various subdivisions. Covenant Ranch, Mesquite Hills, the vineyards out of the college. And it's also disposed of through a construction water stamp, like the trucks fill up and use it for construction. There are also zones at the end of the runway where we dispose of this water. It's sprayed out onto the land. One of those zones has been used so much for so long that it's basically saturated. And it's ponding. The ponding water is a violation of our permit. We can't have that. So we've switched from that zone, the north end, down to the south and the airport, give this chance of, zone a chance to dry out. Part of that project was to install a, basically a large sprinkler. One of the problems with this whole project is the amount of manpower is required to go out there, work with the irrigation. It's expensive. It's labor-intensive. This is basically a single point where you've got to get out there, shoot water. And once it was installed, it should cut down on the labor required. And I imagine the life of the machine will more than pay for itself. Last monsoon, last summer, we had a lightning strike near the Mingus plant. It took out part of the transfer switch, the part of the generator system that decides whether it's gonna run on generator or EPS power. This device was damaged by a lightning strike. We replaced that and rewired a good portion of the generator and the incoming power to the plant. We, last week I was, came before you, we were talking about Soul Source for our company. One of the big projects that we managed up there was the installation of communications cards with various devices in the plant and the back panel that all these cards plug into. That was a huge project, and it allowed SCADA to talk to us. It also allowed replication of SCADA. So if we lose half, we still have the other half, basically. We just flip a switch, and we're back online. So much of that project, the processes are automated up there that we don't want to be blind about what's going on. And this is how it tells us what it's doing, basically. We installed a large evaporative cooler for the blower room up there. We did a tour last week, a very brief tour, and a large metal box sitting outside the floor blows cool air into this room. Blowers take this cool air, push it out into the basins. It improves the bugs, basically, that treat the wastewater, keeps them happy. This is a project that was engineered years ago at an astronomical cost. We did it ourselves in-house for about ten percent of what it was gonna cost, so... We repaired ten sections of pipe in the collection system. We surveyed forty-two sections of the collection system. We installed a new flow meter at the plant, at the Mingus plant. This is a permit requirement. We are addressing issues that we're having. There are two monitoring wells up there. Wells are old and failing, and we're getting contaminants from the surface flowing down inside the wells. It's giving us bad test results, so we need to go through and replace or rehab those wells. But we started that process. We've got bits to make it happen. We got rid of the chlorine gas system that's been up there for years. It was kind of a leftover from previous processes that went there. It's unsafe, something the fire department didn't want to, didn't want to work with. We had to let them know anytime we opened the room and accessed it, so basically, that system's been trashed. Makes things safer for staff, and we didn't need it, so... Goals for 2020. We're continuing to have issues with the blowers up there. They're old energy hogs, if you will. But eventually, we're gonna have to replace them. They're just energy inefficient. But right now, we're making minor changes to the controls for these things just to make them work better. And we'll be fine for several more years. That's one of our ongoing goals. We've got a piece of process that they're called a flume. Basically, it's a flow, flow channeling device. It gives us flow measurements. It's a fiberglass triangle, if you will. All the flow goes through it. This has been in place since nineteen ninety, and the structure that's supporting it is degrading. The structure's actually starting to float because it's got a measuring device up here. When the bottom floats up, it's giving us incorrect measurements. This needs to be pulled out, a new one dropped in its place, but it's, there's a good deal plumbing and engineering involved to make it work. That's one of our goals for this year. The wastewater system operates an in-house maintenance program. It's called Antero. And basically, it spits out scheduled work orders for all the equipment. We're trying to incorporate that program up at the riverfront plant. Once again, we're going to run into software issues, but we'll work through it. It's another goal for this year. The city owns a crane. We use it to pull pumps out of lift stations. Unfortunately, it's too small for our city's main lift station, for the pumps that are in there. We have to pull one of those pumps. It puts this crane in basically in a safe state. It just maxes it out as far as its capacity. Requires us to use an outside contractor to do it. And if we're trying to do an emergency, it could be a problem. People don't want to work twenty-four-seven like wastewater staff does. So we need to replace that. Either replace the unit that's on the truck or the entire truck. We're not quite sure which. It's a problem waiting to happen. You can see there's gonna be an issue with it. Anyway, we want to conduct a project called smoke testing, where we inject, for want of a better word, smoke down into the wastewater system to see leaks. We know we've got them. We know that there are drains that are connected to the sewer system that shouldn't be, roof drains. These are things we need to identify and to correct because there's a lot of influencer waste water. A lot of water goes in the system that doesn't need to. It's not wastewater. This is a program we'd like to bring in a contractor and conduct it this year, so... That's gonna be a very interesting program. I've read about it. I've never seen it done, so...
So it's to identify water coming into the system that shouldn't be in the system?
Correct. You blow smoke into the system, and where the smoke rises to the surface, you'll see it on the surface, and you'll know you've got a problem. It's going to require some public outreach and public education, so... Kind of an experience for all of us. Anyway, comments, questions?
Questions, counsel?
I just add, I'm really excited about the water, being able to sign up online. It's something that I know I hear about when people move into Cottonwood, that just how difficult it is to get water to your house, to your apartment, so...
It is. It's a challenge.
Very excited to see that as a goal. I think it goes to the strategic plan of being, you know, customer-focused and, you know, customer-friendly.
We'll make it happen. I promise.
I mean, you're being recorded, so...
I made a promise. I'll stand behind my word. Mayor, counsel?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right, last up this evening is Chief Kirkendall from Fire and Medical Department. Evening, chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, counsel, Mike Kirkendall, Fire Chief. I'll try to be brief because I think everybody probably wants to get home. At the Covenant Fire and Medical Department, our motto, and it's not just our motto, it's our mission statement, is we're here to help, and that's truly what we do. Everybody sees the high-profile stuff, the response to fire and to EMS calls, to rescues, and to the things that seem to be, we're bringing, trying to bring order to chaos, and that's what we do at the Fire Department. What people don't see is there's so many things that we do and that we're involved in that are kind of behind the scenes. We have car seat technicians. We have car seat technicians that install and, and inspect car seats so that our, our children are safe in our community. And that, and we, we, we go out and we replace smoke detectors, and, and one of the big things we do is, is for many of our senior population, they can't even reach their smoke detector, we go out and replace the batteries for our seniors and, and for others that can't do that. We provide CPR training within our, to the hundreds in our public each year, as well as within our schools. In fact, to the point now where, while the mandates come down from the state that all children, by twenty-twenty-one, I think it is, have to be taught CPR before they graduate from high school. We've been in our schools now for so long that all of our kids, by the time they get to high school now, have already been taught CPR. These are critical things, and this is what we see as, as our mission, to really work within our community and to, to be more than just who you call when you have a fire, but, but to be there to, to help begin, to, to bring that quality of life to our community. Some of the things that we accomplished, well, besides three hundred, our three thousand three hundred and twenty-three dispatch calls for services last year, is we, we completed our ISO, our insurance services office review. They do this now on a five-year basis, and we were able to maintain our rating of two, which places us in the top four percent of cities in the United States. Pretty amazing for a, for a city our size, really, to be able to do that. And it's true through the, not just the Fire Department, but our water utility and, and our dispatch center and these things, and that's what we're scored on, to, to bring us into that and, and the commitment that the community has placed into, into increasing the fire safety within our community, including our, our sprinkler ordinance and these things that, that while seemingly, you don't see the effects, but it really does make a difference in our insurance rates in our community. We also adopted the, the twenty-twelve International Fire Code and the appendices, and we just, we just completed that. We updated our Emergency Operations Plan and our Emergency Operations Quick Reference Guides. Hadn't been updated in ten years, and we just updated those so that they dovetail with the, the county plan and, and so we can work together well within our, not just our region, but within our whole county. We conducted a large-scale active assailant, with, with the terminology of an active shooter, training with, in conjunction with our PD and, and other fire, neighboring fire agencies, the hospital in Spectrum. Over this last year, we placed in service a new rescue tool, the Jaws of Life, commonly place that in service to upgrade our capabilities there. And we're currently working on replacing some of our fire hoses that was, had reached the end of its useful life and do that. We're looking forward to this next year. We, we look to expand our fire safety program within our senior population, especially targeting our, some of our senior living centers that we have in our community. We also want to extend our fire, our smoke detector program, targeting some of our high-risk but low-income areas of our community. Trying to make sure not only that they have fires, uh, uh, smoke detectors, that they're functioning, and if they don't have them, replace them. Looking to find grant funding as well as, as, as general fund, funding to, you know, provide these for our community. We want also, we plan to have our, our biannual open house sometime later this year, in which we invite the community to come into the firehouse, see what we do, see where we live, and, and, and again, part of that being part of our community. We see us being integral to our mission, to, to really be integrated into our community. We also want to exercise our Emergency Operations Center, conjunction with the Applicano Emergency Management with this next year. And then I have a couple of goals in here. They're very much budget-dependent, and, you know, we'll see what happens on those. Certainly, we would, we would like to replace our, our ladder apparatus at thirty-two years old and, and it's as old as my oldest son, I think, now, so. And also, look at the possibility of, of placing another fire station in the more southern and, and eastern portion, or really towards the southern end of our community, to increase our response times into the Walmart in that area, whether it be in the two-sixty-eighty-nine area, these are certainly, or the Cornville-eighty-nine area, somewhere in that area, to, to increase our response times to the southern end of, of Cottonwood, where, where we have some very high, high-value structures, as well as, as where we also have significant population base. Try to keep it short. Any questions?
Any questions for the chief?
No ladder truck this year?
I'm sorry?
No ladder truck this year?
I, I said it's in here.
Oh, okay.
I said, but I said it's, it's budget-dependent.
Okay.
It's, it's in there every year.
I have one question, please.
Anyway. Oh, go ahead.
Pardon me, chief. On the smoke detectors, do we provide services to citizens that can't change their own batteries?
Yes, we do. That's, I, I mentioned that, and I, I maybe I went over pretty quickly. That's, in fact, we do that, well, I won't say daily basis, but it seems like that at times. Very heavily in certain, especially in certain areas of our community where they built a lot of vaulted ceilings in some of our neighborhoods, and the people just can't get up there, and we go out and replace batteries. All we ask is the people provide us the batteries.
Sure.
We come out, we replace the batteries for them.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you very much, chief.
Thank you.
Well, that's, that's it, I believe. Aren't you glad you joined, Councilmember Mayor?
Yes. Better view, better view from this.
It, it is a very different view, and I am sure that at future meetings, I will have much more to say.
It's okay.
But, but I'm new, and I missed the strategic planning sessions, and so, but it does look wonderful. Thank you.
Good. We have some catching up to do, but we're all here to help you, so.
Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else, then I would move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion, Vice Mayor seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.